...out tonight to our last meeting of the year, our December 9th School Board Meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Haber Mill?
Here.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Good job.
Okay, we have some guests that are here tonight. There's some Students of the Month who've been recognized by their teachers for some great achievements. This is not something that comes very easily for these kids, the achievement part that is, because it's tough. You've got a lot of kids in your class. You've got to make sure you're doing your homework, staying up with your schoolwork during class. And obviously, these are a bunch of kids that have excelled very, very well and have been recognized by their teachers. So, we're going to call them up at this time. We're going to have them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about themselves and what they want to be when they grow up.
My name is Caleb Ardeboff from Mrs. Call's 3rd grade class, and I would like to be a fashion designer when I grow up.
Very good. Here you go. We're going to say pledge allegiance here at the end, so kind of just stay right up here.
My name is Hannah Poensky. I'm from Mr. Olson's 3rd grade class, and I want to be a singer when I grow up.
What's your name? I'm right here. So, talk to the microphone. Say, "What's your name?" I'm right here with you. I'm right here with you. I'm right here. So, who's your teacher? We're going to let you go in a couple of minutes, okay? Go over there with your mom for a second.
My name's Haley Mary. I'm in Mrs. Truex's 3rd grade class, and I want to be a teacher when I grow up.
I'm Paige Dodge. I'm in Mrs. Lawson's class, kindergarten, and I want to be a ballerina when I grow up.
Me too.
I am Vincent Christmer.
What's your name?
Vincent Christmer.
Okay. What grade are you in?
1st grade. Mrs. Looks.
Mrs. Wilson?
Mrs. Looks.
Mrs. Looks. Okay. What do you want to be when you grow up?
A police officer.
Police officer. Very good. Thank you.
My name is Lane.
Okay. You're doing great. What grade are you in?
I'm in 1st grade. My teacher is Mrs. Hay. I want to be a painter when I'm grown up.
My name is Joseph Webb. Mrs. Sprinkles' 1st grade class. When I grow up, I want to be a teacher.
All right.
My name is Alex. My name is Alex Worth. I'm in 1st grade. My teacher is Mrs. Becker, and I want to be a police officer when I grow up.
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
My name is Zach, and I'm in Mrs. Stramett's class, and I want to be a male kindergarten. And I want to be a mailman.
That's a good job.
I am Dominic Soto. I'm in Mrs. Young's 2nd grade class, and I want to be a baseball player when I grow up.
We have one more. Here you go, Mom. I got it. All right. So, what grade are we in?
1st grade.
1st grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Oh. Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Low.
Mrs. Low? All right. And what's the next question? What do you want to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
A teacher? All right. Oh, did you give me your name? We forgot that one. What's your name?
Lauren.
Lauren. Logsdon, right? All right, Lauren. Thank you very much. Okay. Come on in. Please stand. Pledge allegiance. Guys, come on here. You guys got to start it out. We're waiting for you. Go ahead. Start it up.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. At Vermillion Elementary School, we respect ourselves and other people. We show responsibility for ourselves. We cooperate to learn.
Great job. I think we had some firsts there. Fashion designer.
I've never heard of mailman before.
Mailman. Thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations to all of our students. Okay. Next on the agenda, we'd like to recognize and actually introduce some new staff members that are taking part in our extracurricular activities for both of these. What is Nicole Cantrell? Nicole? No Nicole. Ah. Nicole's running late, it looks like. She's got to get to early for the... And we also have Jennifer Holmes. She's an educational aide from E-Hovee. Come on up. Actually, need you to come up to the mic. Just, you know, all we ask is, you know, just to tell us a little bit about yourself. And do you have any family members here you'd like to introduce that have them come on up too? We know him, so...
Oh, I'm Jennifer Holmes. I've lived here my entire life. I have two students. The ones have gone, has gone through the school system, and my other one is in 8th grade at the high school. I graduated from Vermillion, class of '93. I've been waiting to do this for quite some time, and I'm glad to be joining the team.
Your husband's here?
Yes, my husband is here.
Police officer in Vermillion?
Yep. We have the canine and going strong with that, and that's about it.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Appreciate you coming on board.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, moving on to item 5, the student liaison update from Mrs. Ennis.
Okay. First, before I introduce our speaker for tonight, I want to remind everybody that this Saturday at the high school from 9:00 to 2:00 is the John Mosley Memorial Speech and Debate Tournament. There's over 24 schools. That includes over 350 students. And Mr. Snook is the head advisor, and it's kind of neat to come watch if you've never seen it before. They compete against a lot of private schools. A lot of schools that they compete against have speech and debate as part of the curriculum. Our kids do it on their own time, and they do very well and often, I think they place in most tournaments that they go to. So, I'd hope that everybody gets a chance to stop in there. And then, this evening for our presentation, we have Mr. Tim Lamb. He's going to give us a workforce development program update.
Students don't show up or even with the lights. I don't know however you want to do it. I'm the, my name is Tim Lamb. I'm the principal of the Vermillion Workforce Development Program that we house here at the board office. Just to tell you a little bit about ourselves for those of you who don't know, we try to empower our students to become their best selves by personalizing the educational experience. Basically, what we're about is that we're trying to get a, not only 100% of graduation rate, but also 100% of our kids ready to transition into their adult life. And how we do that is by providing them with real-world experiences through employment, internships, and job shadows. And to meet that graduation rate, we provide small group instruction as well as individualized instruction. We're able to do all of this based on our online instruction. It provides us with flexibility, not only in time, but also instruction as well. We're teaching positive people skills. We're teaching kids about being leaders, about goal-setting, about establishing good work habits, and also searching out jobs, not only for today to get that experience that they need, but also for their future, that they can find a job that's going to be able to support their livelihood. We bring in local employers to come in and talk to our kids about interviewing skills, about presenting themselves, the way they dress, the way they carry themselves, the way they speak, their politeness. And we actually do mock interviews with our students. Our job shadowing adventures so far have consisted of above and, or Harbor Town Animal Clinic, Dr. Susko's Dental Hygienist. We've done the Vet Techs. Local entrepreneurs have come into our building and talked about their jobs, about being a seamstress, Above and Beyond Salon, Gross Brothers Plumbing, and many others. I provided the board with documentation of what Jeff Keck does for you, that you can take on your own time to look through it, to see all the people that we're partnering with that are helping our students transition into their adulthood life. The only thing is that I ask is that you return them to us at some point, some points we continue to grow that material. We're also offering our kids employment opportunities. Vermillion local schools have hired two of our kids in the maintenance department to help with cleaning the lawn. We're working in the local kitchens. We're working in the auto industry. We're working at G&amp;L mowers, small engine repairs. We're working at the local restaurants. We're working at the local nursing homes and many other spots. New to our program this year is our STRIVE program. It's a students taking a renewed entrance in the value of education. It's a Rotary Club partnership with the Vermillion Workforce Development Program. What we do is that we bring in speakers to talk to our kids about life and what's out there for their next steps. Dr. Faircloth was our first speaker. He talked to our kids about either getting, being up or getting off. And what he meant by that was talking about overcoming life obstacles. If you ever get a chance to listen to this man speak, it was, it was the perfect message to the perfect audience at that time. It was, it was awesome. We brought in the Ohio State Extension Office. They talked to our kids about real world, real money. What does it take to make it in this world? We've done, we set up insurance agents, rental agents, buying a car, making money, budgeting, and the kids would spend about the money that they made during this program. It was real eye-opening to our kids to see what it takes to make it in the world, even right out after high school. A lot of our kids, I hear them talking, "Well, you know, hey, rent's only $4.50 a month. I'll get a roommate. That's $2.25 a month. I can make that." But they forget about, you know, utilities. They forget about internet. They forget about their phone bill. They forget about gas and car insurance and all those other things that come with us. It was definitely an eye-opening experience for our students. All this leads into meaningful discussions. It really is a privilege to be the principal of the Vermillion Workforce Development Program, because I'm getting 17 and 18-year-olds who are at that point in their life where they're really thinking about what they're doing next, and they're listening. And it's kind of a cool experience to meet their educational needs and giving them meaning and purpose. It's been a real treat for me. We're also reaching out to the community. We're doing community service hours. One of our local adventures this, just this last week was raking all the leaves that we produce on this Beachview property here. We have great oak trees up and down this lane, and the neighbors are very appreciative of us getting our rakes out and raking those up for them. And for tonight's crux of the program, for tonight, I'm supposed to speak of our Students of the Month. We have had four of them so far. Our first two were Tabitha Claus and Lindsay Dickman. Tabitha Claus is an early completer. Lindsay Dickman's on track to graduate this year. Both of those students have completed their adult ed program at, for a state teacher's nurses aide at E-Hovee. Both of them are full-time employee of Kingston's, at Kingston as STNAs. Their future goals, they would like to work at Kingston and also to go on to maybe get their RN at some point. And so, that's a real treat for us and a real feather in our cap to meet that girl's needs. Both of them are making $11 an hour right now, working full-time as 17, 18-year-old kids. So, we're pretty excited about that. Brendan Witt was our Student of the Month last month, and he is an early completer. Our early completers complete all their graduation requirements before graduation date. They're allowed to enter the military, start their college career, or start full-time employment. Brendan Witt today just took his test for the sheet metal union workers. One of our STRIVE programs was the local unions coming in and talking about the awesome opportunities that it is to work for the local union. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed for Brendan. And our final Student of the Month was Amber Clauston. Amber Clauston was our job shadow queen. Any opportunity that she could get to learn more outside these school walls, she took. She did the dental hygienist. She did the vet tech. She did a teacher's aide with our local elementarys. She went out to adult ed E-Hovee programs, and she also went out to Lorain County Community College. Today, I had the privilege of doing her exit interview with her mom and herself. And in that program, we talk about their individual and academic career plan, what they were able to do while they were here with us. We completed while they were in our, that interview, we completed her college application to Lorain County Community College. We talked about financial aid. We did her transcript release forms, and she decided to become a surgical tech starting next year in the fall. She is employed full-time by McDonald's, saving her money for college tuition. Some of our employment facts, we are up to 70% out of our 37 juniors and seniors that we are serving so far this year. Nearly 100, we're trying to get, nearly 100% of our students right now are in the application process, and our goal is to have at least 80% employed by Christmas break. Keep your fingers crossed. We've got a couple in the works right now. The Vermillion businesses have been awesome. They really have. We are, we are lucky to live in a community that care about kids. That's real evident. Everybody that we have reached out to, it was a resounding yes. We didn't have to beg at all, and we were willing to do that. So, I'd just like to say thank you for letting me serve as principal of the workforce development, and our kids definitely want to say thank you for believing in them. Good evening. Yep.
That sounds great.
Awesome.
We're doing for our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay. Moving on, Mr. Haber Mill. Pledge of allegiance update.
Okay, so at the, at state level, both the House and the Senate were busy last week, getting ready to head into their holiday break, but both heard testimony on several bills. And the House Education Committee, they met twice last week, hearing testimony on several bills. Couple of highlights. House Bill 113 allows students who participate in sports to be excused from high school phys ed. House Bill 181 seeks to prohibit submitting a student's personal identification information to the federal government without direct authorization of the local school board. That passed out of the House Committee on Wednesday. House Bill 193 modifies high school diploma requirements, and that one's been put on the table, tableed for now, delayed consideration due to 20 or more amendments. So, there's a lot of, a lot going on with that. And then, a House Bill 334 allows districts to adopt a policy to expel students based on actions or information that may endanger the health and safety of students or faculty. Opposition voiced concerns over this due to the potential for disproportionate use of expulsions for minority and disadvantaged students. And then, in the, on the other side in the Senate, the Senate heard testimony on Senate Bill 229, which seeks to modify the Ohio teacher evaluation system to allow more flexibility. So, that's an ever-changing system, it seems like. Some of the things they were talking about was the weighting of the student growth factor and giving flexibility in the number of evaluations required based on a teacher's rating. That did pass unanimously in the Senate, and it's now headed for the House. Senate Bill 239 is similar to House Bill 334 in regard to the expulsions. And last but not least, Senate Bill 167 modified zero tolerance policies, requiring a school board to adopt a policy that allows many factors to be considered prior to suspension or expulsion of a student. That one's just here in testimony at this time. That's about it.
Did I see that straight A funding came up?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that, because I know that Mr. Haber Mill has brought that straight A funding up in the past, and we're disappointed because we didn't get chosen. We had a $3.2 million grant out there on the table, and we passed through the first round of the process. And as it turns out, no one from Lorain or Erie County were chosen.
Was it Kelly's Island was the nearest?
Right. That was the nearest school. And so, a letter was sent on behalf of all of Lorain County schools, which we signed, which I signed as well or was a part of, and expressing our disappointment in the process, because we felt that there should have been more representation that went on in Lorain County and Erie County for those grants. So, we were all disappointed. The good news is, I just got an email from our new treasurer coming in, Ryan, and he was on the screening committee, so he could give us some tips, hopefully, on what to do in round two. I think that the next round now is coming up in April, and answers will be given in June.
Yeah, I'm real curious. I mean, I saw Treka was granted money. How, how, those organizations?
I'm not sure. They, sometimes, you know, some, some of the school districts entered as more than just one district together. A lot of those grants, interestingly enough, were written for computer hardware. And then, ours, as you know, though, was not, because we have the hardware in place, and it was written more for support of the software and, and ongoing programs that were going to support our OIP. And so, we, it will be interesting to see how that works out. And I'm not sure what the details of Treka was, but a lot of them were computer hardware related.
Treka is a consortium, and they worked with a bunch of schools. And so, they wrote the straight A funding for all these schools. So, the funding would go through them to the other schools. And ESC did the same thing, but we chose it just to do our own.
We're with Treka now.
But we weren't part of that.
I'm not sure what, what they passed, but if they, I'm not sure. We'll look into that.
Discussion. Thank you both for your reports. Moving on to discussion items, first of all, community school security meeting. This is something, actually, I personally thought of when I first became board president last year. We talked about school security and what was happening at the time, which was pretty tragic with elementary school, and wanted to revisit this. And some significant legislation was passed based upon Vermillion's actions with all center guard and center mandating. And, you know, now we need to, you know, not let school security fall off the, you know, it's always on our minds. We know that. But at the end of the day, I wanted to relook at what we need to do, especially with the opening of a new school, and reevaluate what our needs are for schools and if there's some funding we need, we need to ask for. So, and that's part of the reason why I asked the superintendent to add this to the agenda.
I think that the thought was too, to ask the board what their calendars look like and set a community meeting. I know that you, some of you came back from Capitol Conference, and ironically, Officer Holmes was here tonight with this, who has the canine dog. And one of the interesting things that we saw at Capitol Conference was that you can actually have dogs now in the school as an employee of the school, which was kind of an interesting twist on, on being able to add further security within a building. So, one of the things that Dave and I were talking about that might be interesting in the community meeting is to bring in some vendors. One of them would be the people that were down in Capitol Conference that were representing that canine unit, and whether or not that might be a possible option for school safety here to try to make sure that we're enhancing what we're doing. And as Dave said, we can never be safe enough. So, I think that the time is coming right after the first of the year, if you can look at your calendars and decide when we want to set this community meeting and get the community involved about what they think we need to do in terms of the community, about our school's safety. Get their input. Get their ideas. And I'm sure that our staff, as they, they have ideas as well. And this should be just a constant reminder to us, as Dave said, you can never be safe enough in the school. So, I think it's a good thing for us to get back together here and think about that and have a meeting about this.
It's probably a good time to, I mean, the landscape is changing on our campus.
Yeah, with the technology and the new, new building, right?
So, evacuation plans need to change and all that stuff.
Exactly. Right. Timing is right.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe what I, what I'll do is I'll send out a notice to you in the weekend review. You can look at your calendars. We'll set a date. I'll set a few alternative dates, and you can tell me what you think is best for your calendars, and hopefully, you'll be able to make it. I realize that not all of you might be able to, but I'll, I'll set a couple of dates, and then we'll set up, set it up with the photo journal and start marketing and advertising the meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I saw an article in the paper a couple of weeks ago about some schools that are starting to use the canines, having dogs in the school.
Yeah, there is.
Just have them in the school.
Yeah, we'd like to talk with them to see how that's working.
Yeah, it was interesting, you know, just speaking about that, you know, they showed pictures of would-be attacker, you know, with a, with a gun, and how quick the dogs were on top of those people was, was amazing. And so, you know, it's just, just another employee. So, obviously, we didn't spend a whole lot of time. Capitol Conference was a very busy conference, and it was busy in their booth. So, would be interested to hear more. But, you know, and most importantly is, you know, there, there is legislation now in place for us to potentially allow and dedicate funds just specifically for school security. And I think we need to look at that.
Just to touch on the dog, the significance of it being an employee, the game changes a little bit as far as searching and things like that. What it belongs to, the community or the police department, there's restrictions on illegal searching and things like that. When it becomes a school employee, the dog's got a little more liberty to stand by the front door and do a little bit more. That's what the significance is, the benefits of having a dog as a school employee.
Great. We're moving on to item 8, which is public participation. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the board? Anybody? Carrie? Come on. What's going on? You're first, you're back. It's okay. We miss you. All right. Anyhow, moving on to item 9, the treasurer's report.
Basically, what I've done, just presented you with the October 2013 reconciliation of the record. You're still quite solvent. Hope to be the next few years. I presented you with a interest report for the month of October, which is a little bit low, because we did not get our building funds interest that month. And then, it gives you a complete breakdown of all the funds and accounts that we deal with at the school. If anybody had questions about any one of them, I'll be glad to try to answer them. And then, lastly, on that report, I believe I gave, oh, no, that was it.
You emailed the one out to us, yeah?
Right. And then, you have the construction report. Construction report, I'll probably have to give you some changes tomorrow. I talked to Tim Rini today, and he wants it done just a little bit differently. Right now, we're about halfway.
Right now, we're about halfway, probably about halfway committed funds. We've committed $9,500,000. The available balance right now is at like $8,600,000. So we're about halfway through the process. And one of the board members requested I submit to you a list of warrants each month, which I do think is a good idea. So that's why I presented you with a list of warrants that checks to be issued.
That's very interesting, although that's a lot of paper. If that's, we got it by email and we can all read it by email to include it in this and copy all the paper. I would only say recommend for the future that when it gets requested, for us to look over, it's a good thing periodically, I think. But...
These are reports too?
No, these are fine.
Yeah, that's, that's the mass of this, of the check register and that came by email and we were able to read it in that format to include it in this. It's half of the document tonight. It's not necessarily in paper, I don't think.
I'll let Ryan know.
Okay. Hey, John, on the total committed funds, I saw on another part of our agenda, I think the new contract total is like $10,200,000.
For RFC?
Yes. So is the 9-4 just what's been invoiced or how does that work? What's the difference between the 9-4 and the 10-2?
The 9-4 is purchase orders that's unpaid. They're out there, and when the bill comes in, we paid them. They're committed funds, the $9 million. The $8.6 million is uncommitted so far.
So that's project money we haven't spent or haven't cut the purchase orders for. That's independent of RFC.
The contract total was $10,200,000 that we're about to approve.
For RFC.
For RFC.
Tonight, you mean?
Yes.
No, we're only approving $600, $600.
That was previously approved, yeah. We approved that a while ago.
The 10-2.
Yeah, we approved that.
So where does this?
Way back in the summer. It's a change order, it's a change order.
I understand, but where does that fit into the spreadsheet here? I don't see the 10-2, how the math works. Is that, is that a sum of some of the?
It's the sum of all the accounts.
Okay, I'll have to look at, just I see $2,009, that's 11, and I see an E. I'll sit down with you.
The $2,009 is actual expenses we paid out so far for the construction.
I'm looking at adding the 2.8 and the 9.4 and I'm getting 12, and the contract total's 10. I'll sit down with you at some point.
Okay, but if you look at the 2.8, Dale, is not just RFC. If you look, it's got architect fees in terms of, RFC's portion of that was only...
So I guess I'm asking, trying to get more granular than what the spreadsheet's showing. Okay. I got you.
Yeah, so if there's any ideas you have to improve the spreadsheet, want to get with them and...
Okay.
Make the changes for my file.
You have two days.
Two days. Next two days.
Two days.
Is there any questions?
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
At your places, I put a hard copy of the goals and I sent you a electronic copy as well this afternoon. As you know, we changed our goals, my goals, and put them more in line with what the board adopted recently in a resolution through the Ohio Improvement Process. And that was a year's worth of work, or a year's worth of work in using three basic strategies, co-teaching, blended learning, and a center-based approach. So those were the three strategies. And so those goals were outlined within this document that I've given you. And I'm just going to, I'm not going to read everything that's on the page here, I'll just kind of summarize through here because the board, as part of the plan, has said that you're going to review my goals on a quarterly basis. And this is the first time now that the board is looking at these new goals and having a chance to really look at some of the progress that's been made towards them so far. And really, I'm anticipating at the next board meeting, or not at the next board meeting, at the next quarterly review of this, that there'll be more documentation then towards the new goals that we set. So I wrote as much as I could here and tried to summarize some of the things, but we can just go through. Basically, it's set up by academic objectives, which is to develop the objective criteria for measuring progress toward the OIP goal. And you can see that I've got three bullet point items there as to what's, what's being done. And basically, that's working with those district leadership teams. And part B was develop and report monthly progress of co-teaching strategies, and we do that through our Accrell walkthroughs and our evaluations by the principals. Part C was develop and report monthly progress through center-based learning strategies. And Accrell was a repeat of what we did for part B. But we also said that we're generating reports through Success Maker Software, which is down at the kindergarten through seventh grade level. At the high school, we still have a little bit more work to do on that, honestly, because we've looked at using forward virtual software and Gradpoint, but we're also now looking at a new software piece with Compass Learning. So this is, that's, that's an ongoing goal with the work, which is a work in progress. Part D was develop and report monthly progress of blended learning strategies, which is a lot of repetition of what you saw up in C. So that first goal, which is 25% of my evaluation process, is the academic performance objective. And I'm not going to read through all of those, but one thing that I just recently did add was this increase in the graduation rate to what you see on the page there. But I think that that might be something that we can discuss and I could give you further information in a weekend review as to, is that a realistic goal or not? Or do we want to tweak that somewhat? I just put this in tonight, that was from my other goal sheet. And so some of that really, without looking at it and scrutinizing it too closely, was just cut and pasted from the old goals and put in there. One of the things that if you recall was on my old goal sheet was some, a goal about the substance abuse program. And the other one was about the HR goal of using Rachel Wixey. Those are just, I felt, ongoing things that we do and didn't need to be included then in this group of objectives. And I believe that we all agreed that this was going to be the new, new goal system anyways. The only thing then that got added was this, was part E. Any questions on the first goal?
Really concerned with Rachel Wixey. I just think that we're, I'm concerned, let's put it that way, with how well they've done to this date, so.
I could give you a summary of that in the weekend review and let you know that it's just like with any new undertaking, there's been some bumps on both sides and I could give you a summary of that and...
It's great that we're moving in that direction. I think it's going to be a big help, but we just got to make sure that it's not detrimental to, you know, your progress too.
I'll give you a summary of it. I think that overall, it's, it's starting to come around to a more improved process, without a doubt. There's, there's been some bumps with both the classified staff and the teaching staff, problems with substitutes. Getting subs on a regular basis for both groups has been a challenge. I think it was a little less cumbersome for us to do it as a district, so it just takes time for them to get used to what they need to do to, as a company, to bring those subs in. I see the ads are out in the paper all the time, but I'll put a, I'll put a summary together for you in the weekend review and I'll add that to my list of things to do. Okay, so the next goal was a staff development objective. And professional development is really important for our staff. And because we've taken on these three major learning objectives, I think it's important for us to give our staff proper training that they're going to need. And once again, not wanting to go and read you every single line that's on this summary, basically, I'm just letting you know that we are in the process of setting a schedule and in the next review, you'll have a better idea of what that's going to plan out for and look like. And we do have some professional development that we are planning for the summer for the staff. And I did put that in here and that's all part of this goal. Any questions on goal number two? Goal number three was board community communication objective, which is 25% of the total evaluation. And if I didn't mention it, every one of these basically is worth 25%, so every category. So the next major category was the board community communication objective. And one of the things that I do for the board is write that weekly review every Friday and let you know some of the main things that have happened throughout the districts. And I think that that's been a good form of communication because you often will call me over the weekend about those things that transpired and it's a way of just making sure that you're not blindsided in the community by any of the major things that are happening. If it was really major, as you know, I'll give you a phone call right away or I'll give you an email. I plan to continue to do that for communication. Also, one of the things that we've done is to, I think what we need to improve on is the agenda. And I know that that's been always something that is a challenge to put together between myself and the board because there's so many pieces and parts and components that go into any agenda. So I think that we need to work a little bit harder to make sure that that agenda gets to the board at least a week in advance because then everyone knows what's coming. There's no surprises, all of the questions can be answered. So I'd like to work real hard with you all to make sure that that gets done in the future. The other item on there then is to submit that school zone article on a bi-weekly basis. I do that for the photo journal and for the community and I try to keep those topics up to date with whatever's going on in the district and other type of news. I'll continue with that. There's all, all kinds of other publications that I do plan on at the next quarterly meeting, giving you an idea of just how many different types of articles and things that are written in addition to that school zone article. So I'll give you a better idea with a complete list of those things.
Dale, you've got bi-monthly, but it's bi-weekly.
With the, yeah, that should be bi-weekly, sorry, on the school zone article, yeah, that comes out every two weeks. The meetings in the community, we do, I go to Rotary on a weekly basis, I go to Main Street meetings on a monthly basis, sometimes more with Main Street. I do plan on continuing the community business advisory meetings, so those I'll keep you up to date on and make sure that I'm active in the community with all of the meetings. And finally then, the last, any questions on communications or anything else that you want me to add or can think of at this time? Finally, the last category is innovative growth objective. And this is more on the creative side of what we can do to keep the district going with some innovative type programs. One of the things that we've talked about that we feel is a necessity is that even though we don't have a levy on the ballot until 2017, the time to plan is now. So with the new treasurer coming in, it's going to be incumbent upon us to sit down with this treasurer and start coming up with a game plan that needs to be done to be sure that we're communicating with the community about why we would need that levy. Naturally, we hope that we can make it go further if possible, but if we can't, we need to have a plan in place that we're going to know how to execute every aspect of what to do with that operating levy if it's going to be necessary. So we'll, we'll make sure that we're, we're doing that with the new treasurer. So that first one was just develop and execute a new levy plan to go out to 217. Next part was increase revenue from new sources. We've talked about open enrollment in the past. We have to decide once again coming up in April whether we want to do a statewide open enrollment. And we'll have to make that decision again. But what I plan on doing is giving you the facts as I did in years past. I think we were very close to making that decision to do that last year. I don't know where the board stands this year, whether or not you want to do it, but I'll give the facts out again, I'll give a recommendation, and we'll decide whether or not that that should go forward. In addition to that open enrollment, we're looking at that international school partnership. Part of the agenda tonight has the change of language to that CVEP application. We've already applied for that, we've already been accepted. We're looking at it as a possible option for us. It's not a primary focus, it's a very minor focus in what we're doing, but it's something to consider as a revenue source possibly for us and not just for the revenue. It's more for a cultural opportunity for us as a district and a way for us to bring a different culture, not only just Chinese, but perhaps other international programs besides the Chinese programs as an option into our district. And that will be dependent though upon what the availability of space is within our buildings. We can't just blindly do that without looking at what our enrollment looks like. Finally then, there's naming rights for facilities. That's one of the things that I'm looking at as a possible income source. There's a gentleman out there that's got some major naming rights for other school districts. I've given you a sample of what his contract looks like. I think that that's going to come down to though, trying to maybe negotiate the best deal we can with that gentleman that gets out there to do this and see if we could maybe do a contract that's most advantageous to us. And if we have the possibility of using our fields or using our auditorium to gain income for the district, I think it's a good option.
Well, one of the things you and I spoke about is just as we're looking at this construction project, you know, other schools have made like their gyms available to the public. So that might be something we can, not just the gym, but you know, the fitness centers.
Sorry, I went through that pretty fast, but is there anything on the last category? Oh, I got some on the back, sorry. Improve the utilization of extra, of existing facilities. We're looking, as you know, to sell the Lakeview building and we're also looking to sell this building in the future. And so if we're looking at trying to improve and make sure that we're coming up with income sources for the district and looking to keep that levy going out further, I'll be coming to you soon with a recommendation to see what we can do. Obviously, first and foremost, we want to have a successful sale of the Lake School, which the auction's coming up here in January. The second thing though, that we want to do is make sure that if we can, I'm going to most likely be recommending that we close this board office down, move the workforce development academy over to the high school with provisions though to keep it as a, as a self-contained unit and demonstrate that we can do that safely and do a good job of that. But it's an opportunity for us, I believe, to save more money for the district. We talked about consolidation and part of that, going back to that reinvention plan and how we can do all of that, and I think that that's going to be critical for us in the future. Finally, decrease costs through innovation, improve our use of technology, less copier use, less textbooks by using the technology. So we'll continue to do those things and provide reports to you, showing you through the line item stats that we were able to accomplish those things. And then that all becomes part of this category in the goals. Any questions?
We've got a lot of work to do.
There is. Four categories with a equal amount of work to do at least.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to recommend resolutions.
So, update.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have one more item on the superintendent's report, and that was the facility update. And the site work is continuing on the new facility. The underground storm and detention systems were started last week and continuing this week, so there's going to be a 36-inch pipe installed on that property. The gas, water, and electric utilities are all installed in the buildings now, so they're all there. The building shell is also continuing, as you can see, to go up pretty fast. We've just been set back here the last couple days with some cold weather, but all of the footers are completed. The masonry block is all up to grade in all areas, and they're completing the kitchen area, and we're moving to the second floor of the mechanical room. The third grade wing on the east end of the building is also being constructed right now. The floor in the office area was already poured, so if you get a chance and you want to put a hard hat on to walk to see what that concrete and masonry work looks like, they're doing a really nice job of it. When you go into the, when you walk the whole thing, you get an idea of how massive the project is, so it's a pretty different perspective. So if you haven't had a chance to do that, please take a look. So they wanted to pour some more of the floor back on the, I think it's the second grade wing, but the ground got a little bit too cold. The plumber and electrician are working in the kitchen to complete the underground utilities there, and so they're ready to pour that floor. And so in the meantime, too, as far as the other parts of this project, we're working to prepare documents to be done next summer for that work at the high school and at Saylorway, and that work's going to be going out to bid here in January. And so that's pretty much the update on the facilities.
Did you get a chance in the last one, I asked, did you get a chance to check on the roads, if we didn't get a study, if the roads were going to support the dump trucks and all the-
Yeah, I did ask Mr. Rini about that, and he says that unfortunately, with any project like that, the, the district is not really responsible for damage that may occur as a result of that, but in general, they, they're not having, they're not having any issues, there's been no reports of-
Okay.
-any damage that's occurring, it's all supporting. The roads that we have in place are supporting the trucks, and so far, so good.
I drive down Saylorway every day. It's da-da, da-da, da-da.
Yeah, it's been that way for ten years.
I know, I'm just worried about the dump trucks over the next, the course of the next year going down the road, and hopefully it holds up.
Might flatten it out.
Might flatten it out, there you go.
We can only hope, right? Okay, we're going to move on to item 10. Normally, we don't put executive sessions in the middle, we usually push it towards the end, but we need to have a brief executive session here. Recommended resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of evaluation appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Compensation of employees and review of contract negotiations with employees.
I'll move.
Second. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's go ahead and call the room with this real quick.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Hebermilk?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes. I'd like to move to come out of executive session briefly and actually do a quick presentation for Mr. Jordan. The superintendent would like to do this now while there's some guests here, in case someone takes off. Or Sid's got to sit through this, but it's well deserved, Sid, so.
We have a gift that on behalf of the district, Mr. Jordan, we'd like to present to you for your dedication, your commitment, your service to the schools. I could tell you that, you know, this is, you're the third board member that now has, will no longer be working with me as a superintendent. It's been a pleasure working with you as you were the board president at one time and a board member now. And your, your passion, your commitment to the schools, it's unmatched, and I could tell you that personally, I will miss you. I believe that the district is going to miss you as a board member, and I know that the entire board is going to miss you. And this is just a really small gift for you to show us, show you our appreciation for what you've done. It's not nearly enough, but we'd like you to have it.
I'm going to say a sermon. Keep it less than 10 minutes, all right?
Do you want me to open? Yes, please. Nice colors.
It appears to be a GPS. So we can find our way. Beautiful music box with a fabulous anchor on the front, it's a Vermillion Sailor. Thanks, everybody, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
There's a little inscription there with a palm on it as well.
Yeah, and I-
It plays anchors away when it's open.
Yeah, it has an inscription, wonderful, thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it. I, I didn't plan to say anything here in the final board meeting, but I will say, when my mentor, who asked me to be on the board, Reed Wakefield, after serving 24 years, when he stepped away, his words of advice to us were, think things through, don't rush to As a new board member, it took me my first year to really learn what boardmanship really was. And I learned it from those guys, and my big thank you goes to Tim Reed and the other board members that mentored me when I first came on, and I really appreciate them, I really did. I, from my perspective, my passion, I only ask that this board, as you go forward, don't stop the innovative thinking. The passion that I had for, for us not looking, who else in the country is doing this interesting idea, let us research the, whatever it is, and let us be the leader, let us be the one who innovates. We have done that, we've been doing a great job at it, we are now on the map, and there's people coming to visit our schools all the time to see those things we're doing, and I only say, keep it going. Thanks.
We're going to miss Sid, I think, like I said. You mentioned with your mentors, when I first came on, the first person that approached me with some guidance and words of wisdom was Sid, and I truly appreciate that, and like Phil touched on, there's, you're not going to find anybody with more passion for education and somebody that put the time in, you have, so thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
All, all board members combined, no one's put the time in, and that's something to be said, so.
I want to thank you also, when I came, I guess you kind of gave me guidance when I wasn't quite sure what I was getting into, and I appreciate that, and your heart is truly in the right place, and doing what's best for the kids.
Same here, I appreciate it. I've only been around a year, and it was a very busy year, so you taught me a lot in a short period of time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Without reading item 10 again, I'd like to make the motion that we move into executive session for all the things I stated prior. I'll move. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Hebermilk?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Okay. We're leaving. All those guys. I'll come back here. We'll move on. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to recommended resolution.
So, update.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have one more item on the superintendent's report, and that was the facility update.